The whole world's saying things I think.
You're not getting banned all that if I could.
It's just gonna be expensive to see it.
I'm running away.
Yeah.
This is gonna be short, but one's way. Dear my father, thank you for this day that we're here today to do county business. Thank you so much for your blessings, Lord, and in your name we pray. Amen.
I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, law and amendment of the Constitution.
Melanie, if I'd have thought like that, that you were doing the prayer, uh, would have done it myself, so I apologize. Okay, at this time, any person with business before the court is not scheduled by me or agenda may speak to the court. Hopefully, we'll actually be taking on these items at this meeting. Tickers. I take her, so. Long date, new agenda. All business increasing project scheduling stepping, anything I want to discuss there?
Working, getting ready to seal coat. When you gonna start Monday? Junior needed off tomorrow or the next day, so. I'm gonna call Richard tomorrow or the next day. I haven't decided yet. What do I get this afternoon?
We'll go ahead and go into budget discussions. There are certain departments that we'll do today where I don't think we should make any decisions there since we're short too. We'll bring those back in with, uh, the other commissioners to go over what we go over today. I was thinking library, health department, airport EMS, innovative trainers, and then precinct three up to your. Precinct three and precinct four, so we'll kind of go over those today. Uh, we'll start with the library.
I do have one question that's also hard to discuss on the commissioner's court side, the budget. There are other meetings, court proceedings that are held here. You preside, presided.
Yes.
A lot of defendants come in.
Yes.
And have to pay court costs.
Okay.
Does any of that come back to actually pay for something like a disk? Court costs?
Funds. I think the funds, the only thing we really get to keep. Everything else goes a percentage to the state.
Yeah.
Other, all, other, all. Fine is the only thing we get to keep a hundred percent. Everything else is a percentage back to the ma- majority of it, back to the state. There's a small percent in my court, and I don't know about district.
Yeah, well, I mean, so you're saying court costs are fines.
Fines, there's fees.
There's a whole.
So more than just like the fines, fees and other things that go to the state.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and go on to the library and, uh, looking at, uh, that budget and discussions with Amy when, uh, we started this process. Amy believes that they can do what they do with one less employee. So, um, you want to speak to that a bit, Amy? That your, your budget will drop by roughly forty-three thousand if we get one less employee. And I didn't take, I don't know that I took the interest out of that aspect, but you want to speak to that?
Well, I'm, well, and I, I had a long discussion with the other, um, employees before I made this decision. And, um, I just feel like we were, I mean, with one other full-time person, with all of us, you know, doing our part, that it, we were kind of all over each other. And so I was like, I really feel like, and I'm not the type of person that if you don't use it, you'll lose it. I don't, I don't think on those terms. And so I'm like, why not go ahead and reduce it by one employee? And, um, save that much money. I mean, I just, um, I'm all about that. And so we discussed it and everybody, we just all chipped in and we all took over, you know, of additional in like Saturdays. Everybody does their part working Saturdays, including myself. And for a little bit, we'll have to do some evenings because I am losing, um, one of my part-timers. I, but I have recently hired a part-timer, but I am losing one. She's actually Thursday's her last day. And so I'll probably be looking for another part-timer here shortly, but now we, we've decided that we can just do it. And I really don't think that I will regret that decision. I don't, because I, because we're fine without one, so.
Okay. And you've had the opportunity now to test that theory.
Yes.
Couple of months.
Yes, and I, I just, I feel like we can just do it, so.
Any questions, Mary?
Well, I appreciate you. Trying to do it with one less.
Well, I mean, I'm a taxpayer too, so I just, if, if we can cut corners somewhere, I feel like I need to.
Yep, I agree, and mine too. I appreciate it too.
And over the next year, there is some other questionable, questionable expenses that I've seen that I'm gonna see if I can do without. I know that book leases is this one that we've dropped. And, because I just think that's crazy expense, so.
Yeah, that's right. You did eliminate that.
Yes. Because I know in the past, the past directors really utilize the book companies that call us all the time. But I'm sorry, if I can get a book cheaper on Amazon than I can through this book company.
Right.
I'm gonna order it on Amazon versus, I mean.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's just crazy to spend it just because it's there.
Right.
So.
Yeah, there was over six thousand dollars there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we were leasing them. We'd have to send them back, and if you kept them, you had, still had to pay for them.
Right.
So.
And if you damage them, you have to pay.
And, and it was like at least twice as much as their worth if you damaged them, because it was the least, yeah. It was, I, I got to look at it and I said, that's just crazy, so.
Okay.
They've all been shipped back and they're gone. And I've already canceled the contract. It's up in September.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the health department. How's it going, Kyle?
Good.
You have a, have had a short amount of time to look over your budget.
Very short, yes, sir.
So, um. You had a few increases that, uh, the former was looking at.
Yes.
Uh, six thousand in operating supplies, twelve thousand in contract labor, five thousand in general liability, and four thousand in maintenance. And part of that was, uh, doing, uh, the, uh.
Medical records.
Medical records.
Electronic, yes.
Yeah, so having had an opportunity to look it over.
It's something that we haven't had, you know, we're still doing paper charts and, uh, at some point, yes, we're gonna have to transition just because of the billing process with like Medicaid. Um, that's how we generate billing, you know, through the system, but it's, it's pretty ancient. So at some point, yes, we will have to do it. Uh, the prior director did put that in, you know, as a request for next year's budget, so. I left it in there. It's a pretty good price, I would think, you know, uh.
You had an opportunity to verify.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's kind of a roundabout figure, you know, where it's kind of charged like per encounter, you know? So it's like a fee per encounter that we have for them to do the billing process, so. Um, that wouldn't be every patient that came in, but our Medicaid patients, that's what the fee will go to. I think it is a flat fee of five hundred dollars a month, unless you go over it, of course, you know? That'll be the least it'll be. Um, so it's something that, I mean, I left in there for a request, but you know, uh, you know, it's up to the court how they wanna, how y'all guys wanna see that. But I did leave it in there because it is a need, but.
Okay, and it can bring in additional revenue with the Medicaid.
Actually, yes, yeah. We're having a lot of problems with our old system that we're using, um, not getting paid for our patients, you know? Um, so there's some kind of problem there with the billing and going to Medicaid, so I'll try to figure that out over the next couple of months, but that, a, a new system would hopefully correct that. They told us it would, you know? So it would bring us in a little more revenue, of course.
Okay. That was under the contract labor, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, uh, you know, the doctor's fees, you know?
Right.
Uh, we did give the, our pharmacist, uh, Mike McWilliams, uh, an increase.
Yes.
Uh, the commissioner court did, so that, that'll be in there too.
Okay.
So on that, on my budget, it shows y'all spent an average of ten thousand dollars on the medical fees over the last few years, and now you dropped it. Mine says it's dropped to two thousand dollars.
That's how they pay our medical director and the pharmacist, you know, I'm, I'm trying to learn how they, uh, take that out of those lines. But those are for our medical director, Dr. Morris, and Mike McWilliams, I'm understanding.
But if you've been spending ten thousand average, you're not gonna have enough if you just have two thousand in there.
There was a reason that was done, um.
Yeah, I was thinking we were eliminating one of those and putting them all under one, but I, I don't know.
And then on the education and training, I mean, it jumped last year up to fifteen thousand. You figure went from three thousand to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's from the last budget year. I don't, I mean, we do have to do more schooling. Like, I have to go every year or so to Cynthia for food service. I have to go for septic.
Fifteen thousand dollars?
I, I mean, I'm not sure if that can be looked at.
Yeah, fifty thousand dollars, man. Sixty-five. Yeah, spent less than a hundred dollars, or if you want to go to the projected end, less than a thousand. Yeah, so before he says. Yeah, I just think for fifteen thousand dollars, you ought to be going to getting a degree.
Well, I don't, I don't know, but yeah, but neither one of us went to school yet this year, but yeah.
I think the reason budget was thirty-three eighty-five.
You gotta remember that, uh, last department head is the one who bumped it up to fifteen.
Do you have that?
Mm-hmm.
You see that? Okay, you see the word, the big J?
Sure.
And I mean, I can't answer to the reasoning. All I can do is just go forward here, you know? That's why I need help, guys.
So between, like Dan said, we're not gonna make any decisions here because we've got a complete court. But I'd like to know what it would cost y'all for installation. And I realize you can't get an exact number, but y'all will be able to get closer than my twelve thousand dollar difference.
Yeah, we could probably do, you know, five or eight would probably cover it. And if anything comes up.
Well, let's move that back if you think, let's just, I mean, cutting back dates are big chat, big savings.
Sure.
He's over here going.
And let's look at, uh, why we changed Dr. Medical Fees. If that's what we're paying the doctors out of, that doesn't need to be changed. There was, of course, uh, there was one line that was eliminated, and I'm showing that that one was in our notes, but I don't remember why. And there's the reason. You're paying contract labor, but it's moving to contract labor in this budget, so that's okay.
Yeah, I think we're, is that combined in those? Is that kind of like combining those?
Yeah.
Okay, because I don't, you know, um, those are paid, so I don't really have to keep up with those per se, you know, like it's paid from the courthouse. It's just our line, so.
Right.
Trying to learn that.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's, that's what happened, is everything was combined into contract labor, elim- eliminating the doctor medical fees. Nothing, nothing was paid out of the doctor medical fees.
Okay.
And so we bumped that one to fourteen-four. The amounts didn't change.
But it's all getting moved to contract labor.
Correct.
We're gonna reduce the education and training.
He's gonna come back with us and come back and let us know what they need. Like I said, remember that it was the prior department head that moved it from thirty-three eighty-five to fifteen thousand.
So do you say, Kyle, y'all, you and Cynthia just go once a year?
Yes, sir. Now, we used to all go to the vaccination clinic, but they've kind of, ever since COVID, just done that online. Now, if they ever have another vaccination clinic, I would sure like to send, uh, some people to that. It's usually like in Austin where they talk about how to do the vaccines, what the clerks do, but, you know, like, I don't know of one come, upcoming. So, I mean, we can maybe add that in there if it happens. If not, yes, we just go to school here.
Angela said that, uh, Rose said there were a few specific trainings that they were going to need, but she didn't, Angela didn't know the price of those, so.
I mean, you know, the options are limitless on those schoolings you can go to, you know? But some of them are very good and informal, you know, informational, and, and so, you know, but yeah, I.
How many of you go to trainings? How many of you go to trainings?
Usually Cynthia and I for sure, but that's for food service and septic. Now, the girls would go when we would have like vaccination clinics, so that. Now, the prior director was having to do the septic trainings and things. Pretty expensive, uh, but yeah.
Okay.
But we can sure look at that, sure.
Okay.
On the, uh, on your equipment, looks like we just went in here, you didn't, I understand that, but just went there and put numbers. What equipment? Explain to me eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars in equipment for the health department.
Okay, where are you seeing that at?
On the last page at the very bottom where it says equipment. Twenty-five hundred, eighteen.
Oh, is that with, okay. I don't even see.
Um, the very last ones, the equipment over five thousand. It, it's broken down, ten thousand.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Five thousand and five thousand, a thousand, five thousand.
Okay, yeah, that, those have been in those lines now, uh.
One year.
The maintenance? Anything about three thousand, uh, that one, is that what you're talking about?
Come over here.
No, I didn't get that paid.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right here, see, it's just equipment over five thousand, equipment a thousand to five thousand, and equipment under a thousand.
Yeah.
Then we just fill in all the line to max.
Yeah, yeah, now, our maintenance fees come out of that too, like.
Not here they don't. Maintenance fees will be back here. There's a line for maintenance and repair right here. You've got forty-five hundred in it.
Okay.
This is.
Yeah, it's for like equipment. I mean, those have been in there.
For, except for.
I think, well, yeah, even before I.
It wasn't, it wasn't in twenty-three and it was in twenty-two or twenty-one.
That's what shows was spent. I don't know if it, it doesn't show how much was actually budgeted in there. Those show the actuals.
No, that's, that's not what's spent, that's what's being requested.
I understand, but if you look at the twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, it says actual, not, not the requested.
Right.
So we don't know how much was actually asked for. That's how much was spent, but we don't know how much they asked for. What Kyle's saying is that those lines have had those amounts in there requested, not that it was necessarily spent.
No, we haven't spent them.
But that was what was requested in the past.
Okay, do you have eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars worth of equipment in your mind that you're wanting to buy?
No. The only thing I'm concerned about is our maintenance fees.
That's.
Uh, almost used all of that line for this year.
That's on a separate, uh.
But I know, but if I have to, you know, if I have to get a piece of equipment, you know, I just bought a breaker box that was fifteen thousand dollars that I had to replace. I mean, I don't know if I could, you know, I may have to move that in there, but the reasoning they're in there, I don't know. They've been in there. But I hadn't had to purchase any equipment.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. I understand that. I mean, because normally if we're gonna purchase equipment, we'll fill out a request form.
Right.
And I don't see a request. It's just in there, so if, I'm just saying, if we don't have a request for it, then we don't need to put it in there.
Okay, we'll look at that and see if there's anything that you can find that was specific for those lines.
You know, thinking back, you know what I think that money was for? Is for cameras that we never got when we were gonna get a new building and all that.
Yeah, we were getting cameras there for you.
I think that was what that was for.
Yeah. That's right.
Yeah.
The ten thousand one.
Yeah.
I don't know about the other.
Yeah.
You have any more questions? Kyle, if you don't mind checking on those items.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have you come back next week.
Yeah, no worries, sure.
Thank you, Kyle.
Hey, thank y'all guys.
You are free to go. I'm just gonna let Amy know she was free to go too, but.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks, guys.
You're welcome. All right, David, you ready? Uh, the only increases in David's were the communications, general liability, and then the, uh.
Beacon's down. Beacon's down.
That's the beacon.
It did go out?
Yeah, yeah, and it's often leaked by the Strobes, same, kind of the same thing, but it's where I.
You guys come out the ramp, well, uh, most of it, ninety, ten?
Ninety, ten.
Okay.
Of course, we gotta pack it up front.
Right.
And then I'll get reimbursed on, on it.
Right.
But.
So our portion would be, we do it all ourselves?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I gotta do it all up front.
Right, okay.
Can't do an IOU?
Well, it's kind of like that, but it's, like, they just don't sign it.
They just won't pay IOU.
But these are their requirements. And we got the ALP going, so most of that all really is kind of an advancement.
So are you gonna go ahead and do these now? Do this now?
Yeah, they gotta be that, yeah.
That's got.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're out.
So that's part of this.
And there's not repair, they can't get parts for them.
Okay.
And plus, they, FAA is going to all, they only do, and then, I mean, it's just.
You're not gonna buy fuel anymore?
Who? Yeah.
You're missing in your fuel at all, or your tires.
Uh, on the oil.
It's blank.
No, look up there.
It's, it's there. I think actually the only change I had was, uh.
Look at the other sheets also. I don't know if it's on, I don't know.
I think the only change.
Yeah, somebody did nothing.
Yeah, they've got the same amount.
I think the only change was communications.
Was what?
Communications, I believe, six thousand.
Yeah.
Which adds another ramp there, too, but all that comes back into my reserving, you know?
Yeah.
Goes in the bank.
Right. And you had, uh, forty-eight thousand for Strobes in your capital outlay, and that's four Strobe lights. At roughly twelve thousand each.
I also asked him, and he, looking at working on that, that land that we own across the street just gets, gets pretty hairy and skeets are starting to get caught, growed up, and he's working on getting a bid on getting that grub before they get too high and it's gonna cost us more.
It's in the safety dunk.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Nothing on it.
Yeah, he, I talked to him. He's, he's supposed to be getting them, looking at, say, what it costs to get that grub.
And the grant, a grant or nothing will pay for that, will it? Wait, what, to do that out of our own? I mean, that, that won't fall under this grant that y'all, it will? It will under the ramp, right?
Yeah. Yeah, because they require, anything FAA requires me to do. And I, I might be, I'll have to look to be sure. It's not within the ten percent. We had, we had a runway inspection done, and he was like, you know, it's not there yet. But, of course, he's not, he's a contract inspector, you know, that, that FAA sent it down, but, uh, if I, if we can delay, um, I think it'll go ahead and do it because they're, they're already, there's like a few trees, old trees, that's like getting really close to, you know, a ten percent. But, but that, yeah, it'll, it'll fall under the, under the ramp. Or it'll fall, or under the, I don't know, it's not in the ALP that we're working on or that we've got going, but, uh, it should fall under the ramp, so it's required. But I just had to go through, I didn't go through text dot to make, get a guarantee, you know, confirmation. And I got new, a whole new, they got, sent me a whole new deal, and I really, this all just happened yesterday, you know, when I got to talking to him about doing it. So I'll have to look and see. I know it's not under what they don't cover, because I looked at that. But normally, they, like, general repairs is what they don't get involved in, or something that, like, a piece of furniture, you know, something that could be, that's not permanent. That's usually the only thing they don't pay now.
Any more questions?
No, at this time, I don't.
Thank you, David.
Yeah.
And then make the change if you could, that did not have the Strobes. As we get closer to this, I'll get that back, I'll get.
And I can't get a, my, the guy that does that is checking on if, why don't we have those Strobes? If they're actually, I mean, I know why we have them. But he's thought maybe we shouldn't be, we might not be required. But. We hadn't found yet proof, you know, he can't. But they're there, they wouldn't have been put up, and I think one got put up because the guys. Put in that, the military put in that bomb, that school, bomb scoring facility, and it's got all those lights, you know, that on, all around, you know, beside us. And that's actually what the Strobes are, is for runway in identifier, so that when you're coming in, you don't see all these lights. And of course, then the school's been put in since then with all their parking lights, parking lot lights. So I'm thinking we're probably, FAA is gonna say, yeah, you, you're gonna need them, yeah.
I think you're right.
I think if I would probably, I didn't know it was in.
Kind of grew around there. But, you know, it's, it's ramp, so, you know.
You either put a sign up that says break, the next one needs to say break harder.
Yeah.
Thank you, David.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Thank y'all. Thank you. Anybody tear your, does my own, look at it?
Oh, yeah, I'll get it told.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, let's talk to Jason about EMS and what he's wanting to do there. And you've had some increases, but most of those are, uh, expenses that you expect to go up. Closing lines, safety and training, education, tires, professional services. And then.
But I talked to Angelo regarding the professional service line, and we're gonna put, um, a lot of my compliance stuff in there, so that was the increase for that.
Okay.
And then the tire expenses, uh, the trucks that we have require a little bit more, they're a little bigger tire, it costs a little bit more. The rest of it was just standard increases that I see over, that I see four C coming in the twenty-twenty-five year. That doesn't mean that it's going to be spent by any means, but. It just felt like those were the lines that needed to be increased based on the total of compliance and things that were coming down the pipe, so.
Yeah.
I have a question. How do you do, I mean. Y'all are going constantly.
All the time.
I mean, how do you do that for, with three thousand dollars in fuel?
Well, the fuel costs, those are, uh, those costs are figures specifically for the fuel cards, for like out of town travel. An ambulance goes to Lubbock, I mean, I'm sorry, to Fort Worth, Dallas, or San Antonio, or wherever, we get a long transfer, and they have to use the fuel card. That's what that's for.
Okay.
The, the fuel costs come out of the total county fuel.
Right.
That we keep track of. And I have month of reports that I do for those, so anytime you want to know the exact fuel cost per gallon.
That's just like, that's just like.
Yeah.
Pink drive then.
No, those are, those are just ancillary fuel costs. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
And a lot of that, we, we've changed that way we've done it, but some of that was fuel cans, like Shane does, our, our fuel filters, so he would go buy fuel. And put diesel in the diesel can for the fuel filters and stuff, but we talked to Jeremy and remedied that problem through the county fuel system, so that, but we'll save money on that cost.
I know I gave this to y'all last time, um, but across the top of this sheet. Kind of goes into what we're looking at. If we do a five percent increase over COLA, or if you do brackets up to ten percent or fifteen percent for EMS. And then, uh, add an education coordinator, that includes that five percent, education coordinator plus ten percent. And education coordinator plus fifteen percent. You can see the amounts over what we're currently at on this, and it's not gonna be down there, it's gonna be all up there, so. You want to talk to education coordinator and, um, your brackets?
Yeah, if I can. I've asked for coordinator, education coordinator in the past, and, um. I really feel like it's vital in order to have a, a true EMT program, EMT basic program. Or an advanced program in order to continually have new employees, um, to replenish employees that leave. Uh, we have to have a pool to pull from, and it's better to usually pull from the pool that, from people that live here. And so there's, uh, and it's easier if we teach our own. I've tried it with four different employees, all of which have, um. Stopped doing the education program and even is gone as far as quitting, so all, all four, well, three of my education coordinators have all quit completely and gone to other jobs. One is still here, uh, but this does not do it. Um, we've looked at lots of other options. There's, there's really five areas of education that we do. We do the NAMT continuing education program. We do the AHA program, which we have a lot of requests for CPR and advanced cardiac class support, pediatric management class support. There's the, the CE program, the in-house CE program that we'd like to, to expand and start doing. And then the EMT basic program, which we combined it with WTC when we were doing it. Um, and we had a partnership with WTC when we were operating that program. Since all of that has gone away, we've ended our partnership with WTC, and I've shut the education program down. Uh, it's just too much work. For one person, I'm tired of losing employees that I give extra work to, that, that it's too much for them to also run on the truck and, um. Do the education program. Um, so I feel it's vital for the survival of staffing for state county EMS. And so that's why I continually request the education coordinator position. The, um, brackets, um, we, um, have come to the point where, um, EMS, um, after COVID, has jumped about ten to twenty thousand dollars. In wages, um, it seems like overnight, but it's no different than what the entire world is dealing with when it comes to salaries. Where everybody seems to be, um, underpaid, um, and the ones that were having to hire paramedics, uh, at a higher rate. Which is almost equal to what we are currently paying our paramedics that have been here fifteen years. And so it has a double-edged sword. We have not increased the brackets other than COLA raises since twenty-ten. Uh, before in twenty-ten, where you viewed, um, the salary brackets at that time and made the decision to, um. Allow me to hire within those brackets and set those, um, bracket numbers. And in twenty-ten, we overhauled it, Nelda and I. Nelda was the treasurer at the time, and we overhauled the EMS system in twenty-ten, and they have not been overhauled since that time. We had to, um, adjust some employees, uh, and, and, and April, um, so that we could keep from having a mass exit. And so I decided that, uh, this year, um, going in through, going through the budgetary process would be the best process to do this in. And to relook at the salary brackets and to increase them, um, ten to fifteen percent above the twenty, twenty-five COLA raises. So that we would be more in line with the industry standards, um, in our area for, um, salary brackets for EMS. And that includes parent EMTs, advanced EMTs and paramedics, three different areas of the brackets. I did a quick salary survey, um, for areas around and included that in my budget, so you guys could see where those numbers were coming from, that I wasn't just making it up. And they also go in line with our current salary schedule, uh, where our current employees are being paid. So I think that is vital to maintain, um, our current employees. Just as it is vital to our coming employees through the education coordinator.
On your travel, when it went up dramatically last year, uh, what is the reasoning behind that?
So we decreased it for COVID. We weren't going anywhere, so I shut it down. I shut, we shut all travel down. And doing a lot of, uh, travel through, uh, we didn't do any travel, and so I decreased it. And then last year, I increased it so that we could go to a cadaver lab, which we're currently all ending the process of doing that. Implementing that, and I just kept it the same, so potentially, uh, those who, we knew, hire new people. The cadaver lab in Lurdi Springs, um, down in the San Antonio area, so they spend one night in a hotel, we pay for the course. And the, and the travel and the food that comes with that. So it also pays for any conferences that, uh, I go to yearly EMS directors conference.
So that wouldn't be under, uh, education and training?
Education and training only cover the, the cost of the conference fee or the course itself. All your hotel fees, uh, meals, uh, for DMs, anything like that, all come out of travel. Unless the auditor wants to change that.
And on your building and ground, we touched this the other day, where you had, I understand you don't want to take a chance of being left in this building, the old building. And an air conditioner going out. And I was, and that was my big deal. Your, your plans aren't to go replace air conditioners right now when we're building another facility.
Um, in building and grounds, I think I have a budgeted ten thousand dollars since twenty-twenty-two, I believe. Or something like that, usually is what I budget for. And all that is, is a safety net. Sometimes I use that, sometimes I don't, um, and it goes right back into the budget, but that is for, um, anything to the building that happens. Like we get a, uh, plumbing plugs up, we got a toilet that plugs up or something, or the shower breaks, or, um. And you have any type of plumbing issues or electrical issues, or the AC unit goes out. Um, we also repair, we have a, a building, um, sometimes the garage doors for major repairs on garage doors, that'll come out of building and fees. Uh, most of the time it comes out of maintenance miscellaneous. We get those garages PMed every quarter, because it's such a big door, it requires preventative maintenance every quarter. Because that thing's going up and down sometimes three or four times a day or more, and so we do those PM. And that comes out of maintenance and miscellaneous expenses, but sometimes the, uh, for major repairs, it has to come out of building, building supplies, so.
Thank you. Let's go back to personal later. You're the appointed official. Your current budget's a hundred and twenty-one. For you. You took it nine thousand dollars.
I didn't. He didn't. All, all the, all, um, appointed officials, general payroll, part-time social security retirement contribution, workers' comp, SDA. And medical insurance are all controlled by the auditor. I have no control over those lines.
Right.
I, I, so I will defer those questions to the auditor. Or the treasurer, whoever helps figure those lines out. I put a number in there because I was told to, but, um.
That's not the number.
Not, I don't know. You would have to ask Angelo what, the numbers that she wants in there and how that works. So I, I don't have any control. I call those my blue numbers, my blue lines, because I've got them blue on my budget. So all my blue lines, I refer back to the auditor and treasurer on it, so she controls all those and sets the budget for them. And she also does the budget amendments for them as well.
Right. Well, I did, I.
And, uh, those are the COLA and possible five percent, like we discussed. Of course, that's still all up in the air right now.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
He said, or I can direct this to him, I guess, to do a salary survey. With comparing Snyder Square County EMS to which other EMS in the area.
Uh, can you stand by just a second here? I compared it to Seminole, Andrews, La Mesa, Big Spring, Sweetwater, Taylor County EMS, Williamson County EMS. A private organization that's going into Big Spring, it's called Allegiance, and, um, Cook County EMS, and I threw in some, a Flower Mound Fire Department in Augusta County.
Can, uh, can you now, you know, get done this?
There are like twelve, twelve different departments I looked at. Now, some of it was, they all had information on the paramedic level, but some of them didn't have EM, advanced EMT and EMT level. So, and the problem seems to be coming from the paramedic level, not necessarily AMT and EMT.
Those numbers are the high, and we'll work from there. I'll, and that's throughout the whole county.
Good.
Okay, you have any more questions for Jason?
I can come up with something, probably.
Come on, Jeff, bring it.
I always come up with a question. Thank you, Jason, for what you do.
I'm welcome.
For being detailed. I always, I've always been impressed with your, the way you do the hammer thing, I mean, you.
Well, there's a lot going on in EMS, and I appreciate it.
You keep up with it, and that's, you made it, you made it a lot from nothing.
Yeah. It's been, it's been a, it continues to be a very challenging job. And each year it gets a little bit more challenging and challenging.
First time you did it, better.
No, I'm afraid not, it's.
So you mentioned Allegiance, and you mentioned it in our, in our earlier meeting.
Yeah.
What's, what's the story there, Allegiance in Big Spring?
That's currently what my biggest threat is right now, um, is Allegiance is a private ambulance service that, um, they actually are in Sweetwater. They do the transfers out of rolling planes, um, in Sweetwater, uh, but the city of Sweetwater, some, the city of Big Spring contracted. With Allegiance to do nine-one-one because the fire department was unable to hire people. And they were, uh, had several nine-one-one calls pending, and, and they just could not keep up with the demands of EMS, um, simply because they couldn't hire people. I don't know if it's, I don't know where the support is lacking there, but somebody's not supporting the service there. And so the city basically allowed the fire chief to contract with a company. It's like a hundred thou, seven hundred thousand to a million dollar contract. I don't remember, I think it's a million dollar contract. For a private company to come in and run nine-one-one for a temporary period of time, and I was told a year to three years, until they could get their staffing back up. But they're a civil service department, so they're bound by civil service rules, so it's harder for them to hire.
Right.
Hire people, and, and most of the civil service firemen want to be firemen.
Right.
And so until the Midland and Lubbock and Wilfrid and all these fire departments. And so until the Midland and Lubbock and Wilfrid and all these fire departments fill up around them. Um, and they will not be able to hire them. So they currently are running. They they run a paramedic E M T service built just like either, just built exactly like mine. But they don't have a middle manager. They don't have shift supervisors. And so their shift supervisors ran out of Dallas. So you've got three crews, three ambulances, and they run about twelve calls apiece. Paramedic does all the paperwork. The E M T does not just make sure the truck is restocked and ready to go. So and they pay they pay more than I do.
That that was my next question.
Yeah, they they pay. That's my biggest threat and and one of the reasons why I've decided to relook at the salary brackets.
I think it's all of our threats because we're in bridge, we can't.
It's a threat. My biggest threat, to be honest, is to my current employees. It's because let's say I'm paying one employee that I pay sixty four thousand a year to and they've been here for fifteen years. But I have to pay this other parent right at a school sixty two. Just to get them in the door, to hire them, to get that employee to compete with, because they're they're getting hired, you know, sixty five, eighty. Andrews is ninety for a paramedic. I mean, it's just, I don't know where they get their money. I still I'm still confused. It's just crazy what they pay. And they don't do transfer.
They don't do transfers.
They don't. So if I ever get fired, that's the first job I'm going to go look up is Andrew Zeman. Yeah, that's true.
So Jason and I had a conversation four or five years ago, I think it's about four years ago, about privatizing EMS. Remember that conversation you used to use? What he told me was that they will come in, they'll bring in half the trucks or less, half the crews. And they'll you'll still have to supplement that. So the first year contract, you're you're you have less service and you're paying nearly as much. Then they come in a year or two later and they want more subsidized. And you still get less funding. So I saw that in action about two years ago. I was at a conference and talking to one of the county judges and they had hired a private company to run their EMS. Same, exactly like Jason said, they paid million dollars or whatever their funding was uh or subsidy was. Two years later. They were demanding three times as much, basically.
Yeah, they 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 get you. They they, once I I've got a foothold in you, then they're like, well, what are you going to do?
Right, yeah.
This this county faced those problems um back in two thousand six, two thousand seven, and I would hate to to relive those days. I won't do it again. I know that much, so.
Yes, ma'am.
This is something I've never thought to ask. This is Scory County EMS and you're in Snodder. Does the city of Snodder? Pay you any money directly?
No, the the taxing entities in this were were the only we get a hundred percent money from the county. No other taxing entity subsidizes us.
Could that be pursued?
Through an emergency services district, yes. But you would have to form an emergency service up there. And then you're robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Well, no, but. I mean, I understand that completely. I just never had bothered to ask.
Right, and if we charge the city, then your city taxes go up.
I know, but.
We we do build hospital for charges. We do bill them. And insurance for for, yeah, for transports and stuff, for taking patients.
Husband says you need better shocks. That's the roughest ride.
We have a truck that is very, very, very rough. We have the the trucks that we order in now have liquid springs. And they're a whole lot better.
There's at least two spots between here and Post that.
Well, I mean, if you're right. My car, I mean, you have to slow down in the car to get through between here and Post, so. The ambulances aren't even different, if not worse, but we have put the we're hopefully. Uh, we'll have three trucks um that had liquid. We'll have liquid springs soon. We have two now. And then the gas truck that we remounted, we got it back and it seemed to be a lot smoother than the than the than the diesel, so. But it's 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 still a two ton truck, whether you look at it or not.
Right.
It's not going to run like it can like.
Yeah. Again, and the important thing here is is you just. If he's fine and and there's there's no issues for for hurrying. And then just tell him to slow down. That ride will be a lot better.
You can get airborne now.
Yes. You sure can. Pretty pretty bad.
Well, thank you, Jason. Appreciative of any due.
Any more questions, let me know. Or call me, come by my office anytime. I'll be glad to ask any other questions that may pop up.
Might speak to the other commissioners.
Okay.
Can do that. Okay, um, you want to go over yours or do you want to wait till next week? Let you know next week we'll go maintenance golf course will come back. I used to check on some things, parts will be here. Go to precinct two, precinct three, precinct four. And then hopefully, I doubt it, hopefully we'll have some numbers and we can start looking at what we're going to be able to do. But we can make some decisions next week, hopefully. I think it would be be better to have a full court.
Well, if you we've been over preliminary, all the precincts.
No, we have not come over um three of the precincts in here in in full court.
Right, right, but we I know we talked about that.
Did we just?
In the budget.
In the budget meeting, the.
We hadn't discussed.
No, not yet.
Well, but when you started.
But we've gone. We did that with all of the other. Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Yeah, find out how big. How big the damage is there.
All right, let me know.
I'm not as young as I used to be.
Sure you are.
Mine says I am.
Mine too. Thank you, Jason. All right, we will go ahead and adjourn and we will come back next week. It won't be ten fifty seven next week, I promise.
It won't what?
It won't be ten fifty seven when we get out next time.